But, okay.
Sandy?
You're live, Kim.
We're live again.
Okay, leave me just on audio if you can, because he is like super fussy.
Yep, not a problem. You're gonna stay as he is.
Thank you.
We don't have a live video of Kim? Dang it. That could have been fun. Okay, before we have Cory, I forgot to introduce, we have our new city attorney over here, Ryan Reed, and it doesn't do any good if we don't have a camera on. Don't wave. It was there yet. Oh, we can now? We got camera? Okay. This is our new... Jeremy, are you looking?
Right there.
Okay, our new city attorney, Ryan Reed. Welcome, Ryan.
Quick shot without your mask. There you go.
There he is. Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so next up is a presentation by Cory Hayden from the Siskiyou Economic Development Council. She's got some good stuff to tell us.
Thank you, everyone. Is this okay?
Yeah.
I can hear me fine. So you often hear from us quarterly. We try to come in regularly to keep council apprised of our activities, and today's special because it's our annual report. So we try to cover our work over the last year, and it was an extremely unique year. We've spent considerable time thinking about how we can express what our business communities and our jurisdictions, the EDC, the Small Business Development Center, and Discover Siskiyou have done in this past year to work together to help see our communities and our businesses through the climate of COVID. And so we will have a short video piece here in just one moment that tries to express that story on how we did work together. And I want to just give you a little forementioned before it kicks in here. It'll start right away with Tim's voice, so you'll hear his great audio introduction. You'll see him in front of City Hall, and then it'll span through businesses throughout the county. So you'll see representation from Mount Shasta, Wairika. You'll also see Dunsmere as well. And it just sort of tells a story about the county's effort, jurisdictional effort, and what this past year really kind of looked like in our communities. So I'll let that video play when they feel confident that audio will also work as well. So it might take all...
We're gonna see if the audio works.
Okay.
There it is.
There it is.
We saw one of the nation's worst pandemics ever. It is devastating to the nation, devastating to the state of California, and it's been devastating to the economy here in Siskiyou County.
In March of 2020, mandated closures and reduced travel resulted in drastic revenue loss for Siskiyou County businesses and jurisdictions.
We'd only been open for two and a half months, and the pandemic hit.
St. Patrick's Day was our last day in operation before we had to close down. It's only been closed two times, once for prohibition and then once for COVID.
When COVID hit, it forced you to kind of look at what do you do and what do you do well. And I think we've all found comfort in relying on others.
But we were forced to make changes, and being very informative on social media, let people know we were here.
It was kind of scary at first, and then it just kind of took off because everybody was staying at home, and we were able to supply their needs.
Local government and leaders worked to assist in the recovery and advocate for Siskiyou County businesses.
The city passed an ordinance for parklets. I knew I needed more seating. That provided a sense of security for staff and customers.
All the support came in just when you felt like you weren't gonna make it.
From city ordinances to federal disaster relief, support for small businesses was and still is a priority for leaders at every level of government.
The Siskiyou EDC helped advocate for funding to be available at the county level. Navigating these relief funding grants isn't easy, so we really took it upon ourselves to help our businesses be successful.
The counter relief grant really came at a great time for us because we're in the middle of this expansion for COVID-related reasons. Just having the ability to apply for that, you know, get the award really helped the project. The local expert help has been great for us. I have somebody to turn to, ask questions.
There was a lot of competition for those funds, and so wait times were really long. It was really nice for them to have our cell phones, and we could talk to them at night and on weekends, and they knew there was gonna be a local voice on the other end of that line.
In addition to direct business support, our county's economic partners have creatively responded to these challenging times.
The things that we really have to offer, it's our natural beauty, it's the wide-open spaces, and if we're taking a county-wide approach, we're gonna be a lot better off.
Discover Siskiyou decided to really focus on inspiration for people to plan trips when travel was safe again.
Discover Siskiyou launched its first podcast series as a way to travel virtually and encourage future trips to our beautiful county, reassuring travelers that Siskiyou's many gems would still be here when the time was right. They also launched a campaign encouraging our neighbors in Jackson and Shasta Counties to explore their backyard with road trips to Siskiyou County for safe and sustainable tourism. Our county continues to exceed search marketing performance even with reduced spending, and Siskiyou County leads the region in lodging occupancy rates.
We work with lots of different DMCs across our portfolio. Discover Siskiyou is a class act.
It's been really hard being a small business through this, but luckily we have a wonderful community surrounding us.
I'm excited to be a part of this scene. I'm excited to see existing businesses doing improvements, new businesses coming in.
Prior to the pandemic, downtown was actually bustling. I see that fully returning.
Our businesses and communities have persevered through the many challenges this last year, and we know they're ready for whatever comes next, because together, we're strong. Siskiyou Strong.
Yeah, the intent there is in every person video, in terms of our businesses and jurisdiction assistance and the county as well. We will do a long cut on that video, and you will see more appearances from Tim as well, because the footage that he provided out front...
That's very important.
Was exceptional. He's very professional, and we really appreciated that time spent with him. So my name is Cory Hayden, and I'm a program manager for the Siskiyou EDC. I specialize in community initiatives and investment. And so you hear mostly about my specific work when we talk about the farmers' markets and some of our agriculture sector strategies, and my work with SRN, and then my colleagues who are here in proxy is Heather Dodds, who won't report today, but I'm glad to report on behalf of Discover Siskiyou. So Heather specializes in digital marketing to put Siskiyou County and our communities at the forefront of tourism and visitor marketplace online. She specializes in that piece of work. And then Quentin Gaddy, who I believe you guys have gotten to know quite well in his reporting over the last several months, in terms of CDBG funding and what's ahead with CB funding. And so we just want to thank you guys for working collaboratively across jurisdictions to leverage that funding for our communities. Quentin did just send me a text just saying that he had received the award letter for the $250,000 planning grant for CDBG funds, and he had some other exciting notes as well that he'll be sharing with you. He also provides really good insight about what's coming, and so he can keep his eye on policy and federal announcements and help digest some of those terms and give council and Tim a good idea of what might be coming down the pipeline. So we appreciate that partnership. I'll go ahead and go to the next slide. So there's me, and we'll go to the next one. So just in terms of our MOU of services, this term started in 2019, and this is, we've had several five-year MOU terms to put in place or, I guess, execute a scope of work. And so currently and right now, our main scope of work includes the Small Business Development Center, which came from the vision of the jurisdictions as a strategy to mitigate unemployment. And so that has been in place since 2018, so it's still fairly new but growing rapidly each year, particularly this year with the urgency that businesses face with accessing assistance. We've mentioned several times that our call volume increased by four times. We pivoted existing staff to directly provide additional business services. The other piece we provide is that public-private partnership to state and federal funding, and so we have the opportunity often to work with jurisdictions to access funding such as EDA or USDA funding to further your priorities. Up there at the top, it kind of hopped to the top of the screen, but the idea of resiliency, infrastructure, and feasibility. So doing everything we can to help our businesses remain strong. Sometimes this includes connecting industries, leveraging existing industry strengths in our county and our cities, and planning for the future. So identifying ways that we can be competitive and prepare for what's ahead. The other piece is the Discover Siskiyou piece, and then the last piece on that slide will just take me one back one more time. The last thing you'll hear me talk about today is business expansion, attraction, and retention, which we call BEAR. And I sent you guys a welcome packet just to sort of welcome you to the new year in your role, and I hope you guys all receive that, and we'll try to do that every year, to really give you some good metrics, the work plan or the strategy, and just a refresher of the way that we work together. So in that piece that I did send, it talks about how not only do we reach the SBDC businesses, but through our work with lodging properties and leading industries, when we sit down and look at the numbers, we are usually working with connecting and developing relationships with about 700 businesses across our programs. We're bringing together folks regionally to develop strategies for a stronger county, sector strategies. The Discover Siskiyou piece is a really great example of identifying a sector and putting in infrastructure and growth around that sector for long-term prosperity. Right now, we're particularly interested in the great number of direct-to-consumer agriculture producers who are in Siskiyou County who are incredibly successful or growing or new, and so that translates into some of our farmers' market work and other aspects. So we just want to give you a snapshot at some of our strategies for recovery that we have been putting in place over the past year. We'll go to the next slide. Quentin isn't here tonight, so you won't get to hear from him, but you will probably see him again soon because he provides frequent updates. There he is, yeah.
Not his mask.
I hope you guys are familiar with my colleague Heather Dodds, who is not only a program manager for Discover Siskiyou, but we each have our own expertise to provide the SBDC. Mine is e-commerce and websites. Heather's is digital marketing. Quentin's is financing and research and development. And so we all work with clients with our unique strengths to help provide them a really great and resourceful experience. In terms of the ways that Discover Siskiyou was very creative, and I think contributive to our communities during COVID, they paused all paid marketing. It was the most appropriate thing to do with state orders. We didn't want to be encouraging travel at a time where it wasn't appropriate. They put forth front-of-mind marketing that helped people remember our assets when COVID was allowed travel again. They developed the podcast series, which was mentioned on the video as well. And so they pivoted their time to SBDC services as well. Just recently, we were able to present at the IMM Conference, which is an international tourism media conference, and so we were able to spend three days in one-on-one scheduled appointments and panels pitching and presenting about all the assets in Siskiyou County to National Geographic, Outdoor Magazine, and some really significant audiences through that conference. It was by invite only, so we applied on behalf of Siskiyou County. We were awarded, and we were able to really put Siskiyou County out in front of some powerful media audiences. So that was recently. And just in the past few weeks, a digital billboard campaign has been launched in the Sacramento Bay Area, and so we just want to give you a little bit of a visual here of that piece. So when folks are stuck in traffic in the Bay Area, they look up and they see the refreshing mountain of Mount Shasta and are reminded it's just a short trip up I-5 to get to Siskiyou County. And so we do know from several kinds of notification and awareness and data that people are seeing these billboards.
Somebody...
Yes, they did. We know they've been seen.
Somebody told me that they saw that. I said, "Oh, okay."
Oh, so this gives you an idea of what those billboards actually look like, so we're glad to share that today. Just in general, the other piece, this business expansion, attraction, and retention effort, it's something we've always done. We hold the county position to respond to the state of California's RFIs, so Request for Information. So when a large business or a specific business seeks to cite in California, the governor's office sends out an RFI, and so we are the office and the entity that responds to those RFIs to present our utility rates, our available properties, our workforce data, to be very prompt and very vigilant to make sure that we are at the forefront of those processes. And so when we do receive those RFIs, they are confidential. They're named something elaborate like wagon wheel, and so we don't know exactly who it is, but we do know what they're looking for, and we try to respond. We do respond with the most information available to respond to those RFIs. So that's one piece of our work. We're really interested in putting forth a business attraction strategy to Siskiyou County that looks consumer-facing a little bit like Discover Siskiyou. So we think we can put together some attractive materials and campaigns to put forward to businesses to really encourage them to come for a tour, encourage them to ask more questions, and encourage them to investigate Siskiyou further. And so we kind of use that Discover Siskiyou forward-facing piece as an example for what that can look like and where we're headed. I'm just gonna look down at my notes because I just did all the slides, and we just want to thank you for trusting us with your staff's time with our team, and it's our job to add capacity to your staff. So we hope we add capacity and not take it away, and it's just a joy to get to work with you. We are also really looking forward to this biological conference as well, and glad to be a partner in that. And if we can ever answer any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out, and we're looking forward to what is next. And does anybody have any questions for me?
Cory, I do.
Yeah.
The Siskiyou Small Business Development Center, is that virtual or location?
So our physical location is in Wairika, but since COVID, we have taken our services and gone from phone and onsite, and we've really developed the virtual piece, and so we do meetings on Zoom with clients. We'll go out and meet them at their sites. There's several sites where we can meet outdoors. We are not, we don't bring them to our office as much right now as we have in the past. Just all of our practices have become so much more mobile, and so those are some ways that we are meeting with clients, either in person, at their site, outdoors, or on the phone, or on Zoom.
And just a deep question.
Yeah.
The businesses that are in Weed, California that are listed on there?
Yes.
Do we know what those are?
So when a client enrolls in free, no-cost services, confidentiality agreement is part of that enrollment, but I can tell you that more than 10 and less than 20 weed businesses have worked with us in the past year to access funding and to develop a pivot strategy and to stay the course through the pandemic.
That's great to know. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Cory?
Yeah.
I'd like to, you know, be honest.
Yes.
For years, when I, I've been on the council for now for 12 years, I think, something like that. And originally, we used to look at your group and like, what are they doing? What do they do? And I want you to know that, I mean, you've evolved, you're growing. The things that you're doing now are really progressive, and it really does mean something. Good job.
That means a lot. Thank you for that.
Right on.
Thank you.
Kim?
Well, I didn't have a whole lot of time.
I do want you guys to know...
I've been associated, just a second, been associated with Cory for a while now, and I do believe the team that they've put together for this has added a whole lot of quality to the organization, and it reflects throughout the county. And in Weed.
Cory, how did, I don't mean Weed, but the entire county do with the COVID relief dollars? Did that...
Oh.
Did that get given out?
We know this is a very small number to state, but we know in terms of our assistance that we helped businesses leverage 2.5 million. Now, if you take the whole pie, that is such a small number, because there's a lot of ways we can add up that relief together. But what we have been saying is, you know, Small Business Development Center helped businesses leverage 2.5 million. But I do think there's a number that can be quantified in a much greater way, and we're glad to pull that number and sort of do the line items and see what that looks like.
So you're saying that of the, what the state got, 2.5 million of it came back into grants into our county?
So what I mean is, just when I talk about the SBDC clients, so those 150 to 200 clients, when we see the funding that they individually receive, that adds up to be 2.5 million.
Okay, good.
So it's not as broad of a figure as I know you're looking for.
No.
But we'd love to calculate that.
Yeah, that's a good amount to come into our county.
Yeah, the California Relief Grant, those several rounds, five rounds, we did see several rural businesses in Siskiyou County get funded. The LISC grant, which was a partnership with Lowe's, funded several businesses in Siskiyou County. It's always great to see rural be represented. The other piece was the county grant that leveraged, I think, 1.5 million in those $10,000 increments for businesses. And so, of course, several local businesses received that funding, and so that's what we've seen so far.
Good.
Come through.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Now you can talk about your stickers. The two replied so quickly.
I want you guys to know we have a series of stickers. Please help yourself or share them with businesses or family members, but we just have a series here. We have that Siskiyou Strong sticker that you guys saw at the very end of the piece, and we have the Discover Siskiyou sticker, which is fun as well. So please help yourselves, and we were glad to share that today.
Are you leaving all of those?
I'll probably take maybe half.
Oh, okay. There you go, Sandy.
So...
More stuff.
Yeah, and we will see you again in just a quarter. We'll be back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Cory. Oh, that was more than half.
All right, well, we'll move on to the regular agenda. The first thing on the agenda will be the police department, FF, and E purchase. Chief Mayberry. Two chiefs are back there.
Justin, would you like that back up, or are you okay?
I have a hard copy of this one, so I'm fine. For you are proposals for two projects, the replacement, that's my, what are you looking for? Oh, okay. Proposals for two projects, replacement of dispatch consoles with either a ZTRON or an AVTEC, two dispatch-position radio system, and then also either a Silky Communications or a DAY Wireless encryption project, which would bring us into compliance with the state mandate that all law enforcement agencies become encrypted for their radio transmissions. This time, Silky came in below the DAY Wireless. There are some, a couple of different issues between the two. They aren't compared apples to apples, and you can see on the comparison provided. I will clarify that the ZTRON system comes with a one-year warranty. The ROM warranty, that's the additional as part of the Fleet Pack warranty wrap, that is for their encryption system from Silky. The DAY Wireless AVTEC system comes with a built-in five-year software upgrade, and that is required. It's not an option. It's a requirement for purchasing the AVTEC. So moving forward, at this time, I am looking for guidance from the council. We have approximately 70,000, 36,000 from the Arthur Dubs Foundation out of Southern Oregon. They provided 36,000 prior to the encryption requirement. This was when we were working on the radio replacement. And then we also have the means to use some asset forfeiture that was adjudicated and awarded to the, our portion was awarded to us, which was approximately 34,000.
Justin, this Motorola, this paper that Roxanne put together, is just, is this just broke down in detail of what you're getting?
So what you have there is, you should have two packets that are quite lengthy, not just the small ones. You should have one. Can you all see this? It has a, it says Silky and has a radio tower.
Yeah, I got those two.
That is their final proposal. The other ones were, as they were coming in, they were giving, DAY Wireless, for example, would give a repeater breakdown or a handheld radio software upgrade breakdown. The end product of what the cost would be are in those two large packets that you have.
If the AVTEC dispatch console solution, that's considered the DAY Wireless side,
That is what DAY Wireless sells. It's a Motorola product.
So only having one extra seat, the Motorola detail, right?
I believe that's the repeater breakdown, line item breakdown.
Yeah, that's just the breakdown.
Right.
Okay.
But they're, the large packet, it's actually in there. It's just, it looks different.
That's detail stuff that you understand, and I don't need to.
Moving forward, again, DAY Wireless was very helpful in that they sent a tech out twice to look at the site. That's gonna have some bearing on possible change orders down the road where everything was done over the phone via Zoom meetings with Silky, so there could be some changes to their bid, and that's noted in their quote there, that there's potential for change, you know, change orders down the road.
Tim? Are we making this decision tonight?
Uh, yes.
And we are to pick one of these two?
Yes, and I've told chief, if he wants to speak up and make a recommendation, that'd be fine.
That was what I was gonna add.
And before he does that, I'd also like to remind everybody that prior to this, we were actually looking at some financing options, you know, having to take out a little bit of debt service in order to pay for this. Luckily, though, we were just informed about two weeks ago with the American Recovery Act that's going on, that we will be receiving half of our allotted, I believe it's $513,000, within the next 60 days. So that will give us plenty of time to, with the chief's additional funding that he has, for us to be able to pay cash for the deal and not have to take on any debt for this, which is, which is nice, and Emily loves that as well. So, but yeah, this is, it worked out to be perfect timing because we were in the process of filling out all the credit applications and the loan paperwork, because this is an emergency. We have to do something.
What is the deadline on this, that you have to have this in, or we all go to jail? I don't know.
Well, the radio system's not a deadline. The radio system's when it stops working, which it has cut out.
Soon, because it's as old as they...
The encryption, the deadline was December 31st. We are working of 2020. We are working beyond that deadline. It was a short deadline, get it done. We are working, we have a method of working around that that's temporary and allowable per the state. So we can do that through, until they can get the project in, but it has to be done.
No, I get that. That was, I knew it had to be done, and my question was the deadline, which is past.
Right.
Does anybody else have any questions? Because I got a whole bunch more.
Okay, I just had one quick question. It's how long would, once we award, how long does a project take to complete?
We haven't dealt with timeframes yet. Again, we're not the only agency that's looking, so DAY Wireless, as they service every agency in the county, so they will be here working with other agencies, but they're also working with Southern Oregon. Well, Southern Oregon on the regular basis, not for the encryption, but just normal technical stuff, and then I'm sure they're working all the way down into the valley, San Joaquin Valley and Shasta Valley.
So would Silky be quicker, and do we need quicker based upon the lifespan of our current system?
I don't necessarily know that Silky would be quicker on the AVTEC upgrade. The encryption is much more a large-scale, or excuse me, Silky would be the ZTRON. The radio upgrade, that is in the department primarily. Everything else is, you're talking about lines to base repeater, mountaintop repeaters, car radios. That's gonna be a much larger project in that it's gonna take manpower. The most time on the radio consoles is training, and that's part of the fee, is the two weeks of training for...
Yeah, that's our number one priority is to get the console because of its age to get it replaced, so.
Based on staffing, what we need to be effective, what would be your recommendation? I think I know, but I'd like to hear it as Tim mentioned.
Well, my recommendation, and this is based on speaking with my support services manager, who in my opinion has, her opinion matters quite high. She prefers the AVTEC system. She prefers the AVTEC system. And having worked with Day Wireless and Motorola, I like Motorola. So I would recommend the Day Wireless.
I'm good.
Mr. Mayor, that was a good suggestion. Based on what our needs are and the equipment, I know we want to have people in the community feel safe and healthy by our quick coverage. So whatever's the quickest and the most effective, I think that would be that.
Microphone.
Well, so Day Wireless, I was gonna, I knew, I thought you were saying that. Based on how it was explained and the fees and the maintenance, I think that just meets our cause and what Tim added to it, which I was asking earlier about the funds, that will, that would meet what our needs are. So my vote is mayor's for that also.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Justin, we were talking earlier and you said that you had 36,000 from one fund and 34 for another. You just said you had 70,000, then you had another 34.
No, the 34 was, was from the asset forfeiture.
So it's part, so it's 70,000 is what you have.
70,000 totals what we had working with prior to this added encryption mandate.
Okay, I, you know, what concerns me is what you talked about earlier, where this, sure, it's $47,000 less, but they, they might have on added fees. Because you know they are. Where this other one is a solid number, because he's been here, right?
Right, they've been here twice.
Yeah, so.
I was gonna add that. When a vendor comes to, I did it in corporate, you know, in Bay Area, when they come and look at the site, that says so much more about how it's going to match with any, if someone not coming out, it just is, is more positive. And if that's what you suggest, I totally agree with that.
Kim, do you have any questions? She's trying to get her mute button.
He's eating a bottle.
Kim, do you have any questions?
I do not. I trust judgment to get what they need.
Okay. Motion?
I motion to make the purchase of the AVTEC system from Day Wireless.
I second it.
Um, it has been moved and seconded to make the purchase of the AVTEC Day Wireless system. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Let's do it, Justin. Thank you.
Nice job on your homework, Justin.
That's spending 300 grand, I tell you, boy, that ain't nothing.
Um, okay. Oh, I've lost all my papers here. Uh, item B, the encroachment permit request, council will consider request by the chamber for road closure from Inez to Division on 420, from 9:30 to 8:30. 9:30 AM to 8:30 PM.
And that, that was modified, so it's Inez to, right before Bank of Amer- or.
Okay, Inez to US Bank. Who is speaking? Tim, Richard?
Richard.
Okay.
You want us to speak? Yeah, okay. The Wheat Chamber of Commerce is requesting that the road be closed from Inez.
Is it on?
Yeah.
Here, get a little more by your mic.
Closer to the mic.
Closer to the mic and no mask.
No mask, yeah.
Got it. Thank you. The Wheat, Wheat Chamber of Commerce is requesting a road closure on behalf of the 420 event. It'll be closed from Inez to the US Bank driveway. We've already discussed where the location of all the vendors will be on one side of the street. So in case there's an emergency, we can open up the street to allow emergency vehicles through. And I believe, do you have anything else to say?
Do I have any additional question?
I do. Uh, what kind of booths will be set up downtown?
We have many artisan vendors. We have artisan vendors that have applied, that are really excited to come out from jewelry, soap making, wreaths, shirts. Oh, yeah, candy, I mean, just, oh, yeah. And we will also be having Montgomery's Catering, we'll be doing burgers that day. We have music being set up, live music and music set up in Heritage Plaza. We have.
The chamber will be set up also.
For refreshments.
Yeah. And basically the money is going to go towards our scholarship fund and that's basically what it's going to be for.
No alcohol.
No alcohol.
Is there a cost to enter the event?
No. There's no, there's no cost to it.
That's good to know.
Okay. Anybody else?
I would make the suggestion that we put a sign for parking into the back parking lots on Clay Street.
Ooh.
Yeah, I can see if Craig has one I can borrow or we can maybe put up some type of chalkboard or a sandwich board or something.
Do we have signs that say parking?
On street, we do. They're brown. Yeah, we can make it work. We can make it work.
Yeah. Okay, great. I hope it's successful.
We do too.
Yeah.
We don't need any kind of motion.
I could party.
I don't know. Do they need a motion to approve this?
Usually Craig can approve them administratively unless they have to go and be decided on, so yes.
Okay, so we don't need a motion?
No, you do, please.
Okay.
No, yes, please.
Oh, we do.
I, I still move.
Stacy?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the encroachment permit request. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good. Thanks.
Thank you very much, babe. We're good, we promised.
Good. Um, discussion item, council will discuss potential modifications to WMC 522, 829 and 18.6 cannabis ordinance and give direction to staff. So, hang on, Ryan, this one we don't need to vote on. We're just.
Information only.
Mm-hmm. And direction to staff.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Great, yeah, I figured I would take an opportunity at my first meeting to, to find a reason to talk. So here I am. Staff came to me to discuss potentially either overhauling or at least consolidating and clarifying the city's various chapters in its municipal code regarding cannabis and cannabis businesses and medical cannabis use as well. So this is, as Tim said, a discussion item, really just to update council that this is something on staff's radar and that we're considering an ordinance to make some changes and see what council's thoughts are and see what direction council might have to, in doing so. So I'll briefly just go through how the city's municipal code regulates cannabis activities and then kind of discuss a few of the potential places for changes that we've identified. So the first place is chapter 5.22, which regulates cultivation of cannabis for commercial purposes. Basically, if you want to cultivate for commercial purposes in the city, you have to get a permit under chapter 5.22, which goes through the city manager's office and is subject to a pretty lengthy list of requirements in the municipal code. So you have to get a permit. Otherwise, as I'll talk about in a minute, you can grow medical cannabis accord, in a, once you've been provided a separate permit under chapter 18.60. Under state law, you're allowed to grow by right up to six plants in your home. So there's an exception to this ordinance for personal use growth up to six plants. Or separately, the municipal code says that you can grow cannabis as part of a microbusiness. And currently, commercial cannabis cultivation is only permitted in the CM or M zones for smaller grow, and smaller grows are also allowed in the CI zone. And they are in limited circumstances allowed on the same site as a lawful dispensary, but only if a use permit has been authorized. So the second chapter of the municipal code is chapter 8.29, which you probably are all more familiar with. It is the retail, both storefront and non-storefront retail, commercial cannabis permitting ordinance. Permits under that chapter are valid for one year. They again go through the city manager's office. The, the permitting process is laid out a little differently than chapter 5.22 and the city manager otherwise has the authority to implement regulations to implement the chapter. And for both of those, I should say, for cultivation and for retail permits, the city manager's decision can be appealed to the council. So you might see appeals. I'm not sure if you have. You probably, I'm guessing that you have. So you, so that, that is, currently that appeal is permitted to the city council. And then finally, a little bit older of a permitting, permitting system, but the, chapter 18.60, which is in the zoning ord, zoning code, allows medical cultivation up to cannabis, of cannabis, up to 80 square feet of canopy or 12 plants, whichever is greater. And then there's particular restrictions based on whether it's an individual growing for themselves as a qualified patient or as a medical patient or if it's somebody who is considered a qualified caregiver that is growing on behalf of their patients that they're representing. Again, those, there's a permit that's required for that. It goes through the city manager's office and there's even more limited regulation, requirements in the municipal code and those are valid for one year unless they're revoked or suspended, in this case by the city council after a hearing. And then the city council can also hear appeals of those. And as I understand from talking with staff, we currently have two retail dispensaries under chapter 8.29. We have one commercial cannabis business that is a microbusiness, which means it does cultivation, processing and distribution. And that one is operating under a conditional use permit outside of these permitting schemes. And then finally, we have one medical cultivation permit issued under chapter 18.6. Do you, does anybody want me to clarify anything before I jump into the thoughts and recommendations? Or go through the rest?
Yeah, we get that.
Okay, yeah, okay.
I think we made that mess. Process question. I know prior to you coming aboard, we had collaboration with the police and he, chief and staff would do a lot of work. So what's that thought going forward? Just, you can make it so the public knows how that's going to go forward. It's probably good to know.
Yeah, so at this point, we'll get recommendations from the city council on what, on generally what they want to see here. And then we will work, staff will work, including with the, the police department to, your recommendations might either be bring back an ordinance that does X, Y, or Z, or it might be bring back more concrete recommendations along the lines of what, what you're thinking. In either event, staff will then go back and prepare an ordinance in coordinating amongst themselves, including the, the police department, and then bring that back to the city council. If that's, again, if that's your direction here. The, the other difference here is we're probably not looking at a major change in how the city allows cannabis activities. What we're really looking at is cleaning up some of the, some of the language to make it easier for the city staff to implement, make it easier for, for folks that are looking to get into cannabis businesses to, to apply for permits, the like.
Thank you for that.
Of course. So the, the first recommend, recommendation or thought to consider is consolidating all of these chapters into one or two places to look. And then also kind of setting the same procedure for permitting for each of them. Is that an order test?
No, I don't want to hit over there. Okay, go ahead.
No worries. So basically what we'd recommend is having all of the cannabis regulations in, well, in one place predominantly. So perhaps either in chapter 5.22 or chapter 8.29, setting the same process or a similar process for each type of permit, cannabis permit that's being authorized. Separately, we will need to make sure that the zoning code says what zoning restrictions are applied. That is also kind of, both chapter 5.22 and 8.29 have zoning restrictions right now and we would likely move those to the, to chapter 18.60 or somewhere else in the municipal, in the zoning code just to clarify that certain cannabis activities are only allowed in certain zones. So that's, that's one recommendation, just to kind of consolidate and have these all along the same process. Let's see here. Another point to consider is many cities, when they're adopting these regulation ordinances, either expressly prohibit all cannabis activity that's not permitted within, that's not permitted by the municipal code or expressly permit all cannabis activities that is, that are not dealt with by the municipal code. So in other words, the city's municipal code regulates commercial, as far as commercial cannabis activities, commercial cultivation and commercial retail. But there are other types of activities, distribution, manufacturing, microbusinesses, which are not dealt with in the code. And so as currently interpreted, staff takes that to mean that those are permit, those are allowed in, at least as I understand, that those are allowed in the, the city without a local permit. That still means that those businesses have to go to the state and get a state permit. So for example, the microbusiness has to have a, a type 12 license from the state to operate as a microbusiness. But for the city's purposes, they would only be subject to zoning and not a local permitting requirement. So, so the way that the city can do this is either continue that practice and expressly allow any activities only subject to a state license and not a local license, or to go the other way, which is what many cities do and say, no cannabis activity is permitted within the city unless we have a permitting process for it. So that's, that's another point to, to consider, cleaning up or at least making the council's interpretation and understanding of it clear, either way. And then finally, one point to consider is the, the medical cultivation chapter. We actually, as I said, we have one permit currently issued for it. It's a little bit of a vestige of the fact that medical cannabis was permitted before there was the, the broader Prop 64 adult use cannabis permissions. Most cities have since gotten rid of medical cultivation permitting schemes, or personal medical use cultivation schemes at least in favor of the provisions in state law, which allow people by right the six plants. So it's something worth considering, whether the city wants to continue to have this separate process for permitting medical, personal medical cannabis growth or if we're planning on ruling, allowing personal use subject to state law, commercial cultivation subject to our local requirements.
Just a question. And just what you said, so we have a medical condition right now? Is that a, a family purchase or a business? Do we know that or do we?
I wonder that's, who is our one medical provider?
So I think it's a, it's a private individual. Yeah, so, so, and that is just somebody who can grow it on their own behalf or on, or for up to two qualified pa, two patients of theirs, but it's really like.
We only have one in this town that has that?
Yeah, and that, that might be because that, that ordinance was adopted in 2015 and almost immediately thereafter, Proposition 64 was implemented. And that allows growth, personal growth by up to six plants by right. So there's a permit process if you want to grow, I guess, this allows, the medical ordinance allows like, a slightly larger canopy area. So if you wanted to grow slightly more than six plants, then you would apply for a permit and go through this process.
Oh, got it.
But that is probably uncommon.
And your suggestion is based on other cities and the legality to it, it's probably not good to have that?
Yeah, it can just be confusing, I suppose. It's just another chapter and another permitting requirement that the city has to implement and that might come to you on appeal, for example, if the city manager denies it. It, where, when people are already allowed to grow up to six plants personally and as you see, there's only one permit, people often, or cities often just determine that this separate permitting requirement is not useful.
It sounds like it might go to human rights, what they're allowed to do on a medical condition based on what the city tells them they can. Is that part of the gray area? That's probably important? It sounds like to me that it might be.
Yeah, I, so I mean, it's, well, I'm not sure. Maybe restate that.
No, just that regarding medical and the city giving a, or decision on it, that goes to their rights.
Yeah.
As a human being, so we, it's really, would the humans' right condition kind of point that out?
It does, it does put the city into a slightly different position than it typically is as far as what type of, but, but on the other hand, if we were, didn't have a permitting system, we would be saying that they can't take that, they can't do that activity at all and rather they are just subject to the standard six plants under the, under state law.
And you say most cities do what, from your experience?
Most, most cities have removed, at least most cities that I've worked with have removed separate permitting processes for medical, for medical, personal medical growth, if they ever implemented them.
Thank you for that.
Aye.
I do have one question, Sue. On that six plants per personal growth, is that per person or residential or per residence?
That's a, a good question. I'm not sure the answer. I imagine, I believe it's per person.
Okay.
Sorry, Justin has a.
I can add a little bit first. So what he's referring to was prior to Prop 64, remember the, the greenhouse issue? So that's where all this came out of. After, when Prop 64 was passed, it said, prior to Prop 64, we said you could only grow in a greenhouse, you cannot grow inside. Once Prop 64 was passed, it says you cannot tell somebody they can't grow inside. You can only regulate it inside. So we could go in. So we could go and say you can only have this much wattage of a lamp, or your wiring has to be, it's basically with building, building codes. So that's where we've been in conflict since the passage of Prop 64. We cannot tell a person that wants to grow medically at home, six plants for one person, they can have another person and have up to twelve plants. We can't tell them they can't grow inside, but we can regulate how they do that.
I thought, I thought part of that was that we didn't, we said they couldn't grow outdoors. If it was outdoors, it had to be in a greenhouse.
So.
Is that in there also?
Well, and I'm going off of currently, outdoors and greenhouse are two different things, as you've heard from the development plan. So that's what I'm referring to. So you can't grow out, just open air in the sun is not allowable per our municipal code. We said you could have a greenhouse and you could not grow indoors, but Prop 64 says that a city cannot tell somebody they can't grow indoors, you can only tell them how to do it safely.
Okay.
But it, and also Prop 64 prohibits outdoor growth still, correct?
We can still prohibit outdoor growth.
Okay.
Yes. It's, it only, I'm only talking about, we cannot tell them they can't grow inside their residence.
Right. But how, how often does that subject actually come up? I mean, we're not going in to look at a house because they're growing personal.
Right. We only have one permit, but that's not, we run into people, one, we did issue a citation last year for somebody that had a very large grow, that had just harvested, I'm sure that fifty dollar ticket, they probably, if they sold that product, I'm not saying they did, was probably forty to fifty thousand dollars worth of product that they had grown in the back.
Oh, and that's our point of having it, is so somebody doesn't have a commercial grow inside their three bedroom house.
The whole purpose of the outdoor grow limitation was the smell, the whole problem.
Right. Yep. I like that.
Indoor, you can run into issues with mold and whatnot, and that's where the building department comes in, and that's where we would.
And so the type of grow, the commercial, potentially commercial grow that the chief is talking about.
Inside a house.
That would be subject theoretically to chapter five point two two, commercial cultivation. So they would also be violating our restriction on cultivating for commercial purposes without a permit. So that is, that would already be regulated if they tried to grow more than six plants.
And there's regulations for zoning as well, I think.
Yes.
Right. Okay.
Yeah. So they would, they would have to be doing it within a, the CM or CI zone.
All right. And we're, we're leaving that, basically, we're leaving everything we have in there, you're just gonna rearrange it.
Possibly.
Maybe change some stuff?
And potentially if, if the council wants to, to change the, at the point I mentioned at the beginning about whether our presumption is that the, that all activity that you can't, so our, we allow permitting for cultivation and retail. So we also discussed putting, whether we're gonna put in a provision that says if you, if it's not cultivation or retail, you can't do it here. Or if we're saying if it's not cultivation or retail, then you can so long as you have a state license and a, it complies with zoning. Either way, we, I would recommend putting in a state, an affirmative statement that declares what our intent is, but that will, you know, that, we should clarify either way, but whether, which way we want to go is a council determination. We can also bring back language and talk about that. It's simple language either way, so we can talk about that when we actually bring back language, either way.
Ms. Mayor?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Ryan, and Justin, you might help on this too. There was a, I think it was probably when, when it first, we first allowed medical, but a fellow was here, matter of fact, the story was that his, his wife was from weed and he created, he had a strain for, that, that was really effective with cancer. And he wanted to do a grow here to do the, and he wasn't able to do that. And I don't understa, I, do you, so what you're talking about is we would have a permit set, something set up for permitting all? If, if we decided to have that no, nothing will be grown in weed without?
A permit.
Without a permit. So with something like this, what?
So that would be, that would be another question. If, if the city does, if the council decides to go with the no cannabis activity except as permitted in the municipal code, the, the follow-up question of that would be, well, going down the list of what's permitted under state law, is there anything else that we want to add to be allowable within the city? But I think what you're talking about would be, was the person intending to sell it, sell the strain?
He was doing it in a residential area, was his primary goal or his primary problem. Plus he was taking a two-car garage, making it to a one-car garage. So it was a little bit convoluted past that.
So that, so that individual would be allowed to grow under, under state law, be allowed to grow up to twelve plants, I believe, right, for him and his wife? Up to twelve plants by right. So we can't, except for we can still apply reasonable regulations include, I mean, our zoning code still applies, our, you know, garage requirements, for example, would still apply. So that individual could grow it for personal use for him and his wife. That person would have to apply, apply for a cultivation license under chapter five point two two currently to sell, to, to grow, grow cannabis to sell, whether that is for medical, ultimately for medical use or ultimately for just adult use. So that, and that would remain. That person could come in and apply for a chapter five point two two permit, wherever we put that, and then they would have to get a state license to cultivate as well.
I personally would like to see us consolidate cannabis regulations and the permitting process so that we address each one of those items, whether it be cultivation, microenterprise, commercial, personal, manufacturing, distribution, retail, and delivery, so that we, our staff has one place to look and they can come up with a fairly sane answer to any individual looking to ask what the hell's going on.
Okay.
And it's consistent, so we don't have an interpretation, and we've had a bunch of them. The only other thing that I would be concerned about is that once we open up this can of worms, we've had object, strong objections at council and challenges to us creating an ordinance. Does that open us up for any kind of voter referendum to say they don't want us to do that?
They, yes.
I hate to say that in the, in the public, but that is actually what's gonna happen.
So they could referend any ordinance that you put out. The result of that would be besides an election, which is, which has consequences as well, but the result of that would be that you would go back to the current system. So that, I mean, that only gets them so far, I guess, and that might not be the outcome that they're looking for either, given that the, that the, a lot, I mean, there's interest.
I hate to be that nascent.
There's interest, no, of course. But there's interest in, that's important, that's definitely an important point. So yes, if there was a referendum brought, it would bring, and it was successful, it would bring the ordinance back to where we sit right now. One way to potentially mitigate some of that risk is to address the less controversial parts of it, the consolidation of it as one ordinance. And then if there's other parts that really get into the substance of regulating what's permissible and what's not permissible cannabis activity in the city, then you could do that as a separate ordinance, and that would be separate, separately referended, referended. And so then we would at least have the consolidation to, to have one place to look. But that also draw, you know, that takes the.
You, your head to explode enough.
It seems to me like, Ms. Mayor, the best decisions to make, what's best for what we have for covering what the product does, whatever it does. And so when you mentioned there's a list, those lists may become longer, and then we have to dress again. So, so I, I like the decision that you're suggesting, that we consolidate the duplicate areas and make it more reasonable for everyone to understand on both sides. And then we won't have to come back, because I've been involved with those stuff for eight years, those discussions and those meetings and those confrontations. And we just need to do the right thing based on, because as you remember, we voted against it before, and I said, well, it was gonna come legal, sure it did, and we had to change our stuff around. So I think as we move forward, as long as we do what's best for us not to be put in legal positions, but we're fair to the public, I, I think we deserve that. I think people deserve that.
Of course.
Okay. Bob, so, so the, the direction that we're going to put is yes, clean it up. Now, we're not going to change anything like our only retail on Main Street.
No.
And you can't, right, the two, and you can't willy-nilly go rent a someplace and start growing, and we're not changing that.
Correct. There will be no substantive changes to the, to what cannabis activity is.
Then what, well.
Well.
Ours, because we were a little more strict when we were meeting in our, in our ad hoc committee. We wanted to be more strict because we didn't want weed to become a weed destination. So.
Yeah. I think the intent here is to clean.
As long as, yeah. As he understands that.
Yeah. Is, is, is just clean it up, consolidate it, because what happens is we get calls throughout the week, myself, Sandy, some other staff members, and then it gets really confusing because they're going, you know, hopping from one ordinance to another, to another. And so.
In our ordinances, there, if we look at them, I'm pretty sure there is verbiage for manufacturing, and there is verbiage for distribution in, in all of that. How clear that verbiage is, is our problem.
Of course. Yeah. So.
And that's what you're gonna fix?
Yes.
I'm good with that.
Clarify.
Clarify. Make it easier for, since you.
Ms. Mayor, I think that what we, what we're discussing here is not reinventing the wheel. Brian is, has other communities that he's, that they've already found out these issues and what you're ta, what you're talking about through experience, hey, let's, let's clean this up because this could be, you know, that we've had an issue at some other place.
Yes.
And we, we pretty much, what we've been doing is shooting from the hip as we started. I mean, and no offense, man, but Sue and Kim and Justin did, I mean, started from scratch. Started from scratch, and information has slowly evolved to where we are now. But I, I think that we need to.
So our advice is please do it.
Please.
Great. Yeah. And to, to clarify, the, the ordinances are all independent. They, they, everything is, works and is, and you've done a fantastic job. One of the challenges, especially in the cannabis arena, is just that the, the best practices have changed and the law is, is changing all the time from 2015 and on. Your city has done, and my city has done a, a great job adapting as each, as each new law and change has come. I've been working with several cities more recently that are just now going through the process, and we learned from the trials and errors of folks like you guys who did it early.
Thank you.
And so, so we appreciate it, but, but it is, it's just building off of this, so.
We could probably have a list of what not to do.
I'll write you, I'll just write you a personal check.
Yeah. We have a list of things of what not to do. Okay. So make it easier for our staff.
Okay. That's the direction.
Except for Craig.
Yeah. Well, yeah, he's specifically written in there as a.
Yes. Okay. So we're good on that one? We can move on to the consent agenda.
Ms. Mayor, if there's no questions, I move that it be approved.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Hold on a second, I have to look real quick.
Oh.
I thought, I'm sorry.
What did you do, fourth or?
Nothing. Okay.
We're good. Sorry.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? She couldn't find the mute button fast enough, so I'm sure she's good.
Did you give it a fish?
Kim?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, okay, staff reports. Let's see. I'm going from back to front. Justin. And Justin, by the way, it just made me think of this. I appreciate what Roxanne put on social media the other day about all the calls and how many, and she did like a little report from last month.
We do those every month.
Well, I must not have been, I, I appreciate that, though.
It's, it's Roxanne and Sergeant Clonpern that do those.
And she gets it out on weed neighborhood watch and all that. So that's good.
Yes. I see it every month.
Yeah. I probably did read it.
So as, as we mentioned in the budget meeting the other day, but the public wasn't online for that, mentioning the stats, our stats are up for the first three months of the year quite a bit. We're anticipating a busy summer. We did have a support services manager, Roxanne Anzo, did just complete a supervisor training that we were able to find online, so that was good. So she's current on that and up to date. Other than that, I have nothing else to report unless there's any questions.
Yep. Steve?
Nothing to report.
Nothing?
Nope.
How many calls did you guys go on? You know, next month, tell us. Craig?
Yeah. Nothing really.
We, we'll narrow them out in the budget hearings.
No budget, none. Staff's been hardworking trying to get our EDA grant finalized, and we're running into some problems with STIP, but I think all of staff here is gonna get it taken care of. We're working on it, so just let you know.
Okay. And we are going to asphalt things when the weather changes? We're gonna asphalt things when the weather changes?
Yes.
I drive over that every day and go, oh, I bet they're hoping it gets warm.
Been doing things. I saw some new holes that have been re, re-sooted, whatever it's called. So thank you for that.
Yeah. We're doing some patching, but the one on college just ended up being a situation that has to stay like that all winter, so.
Yeah. Till the weather gets good.
Is there metal that we can put over that at all? Because I see everybody hitting the brakes, I mean, just.
Good.
Including mine.
So go some faster college.
I'm so slow anyway, and I wanna go slower. I got a new car. Well, I knew that new, but newer than the one that I got.
We'll try to keep it full of base rock, so.
Okay.
You guys keep pushing it out when you drive over it.
It's not me. I hit this kid. My poor dog, he hit the windshield.
Poor dog. Emily?
I have nothing to report.
Can we, can we not share? We probably shouldn't share what you said to me today.
No.
Okay.
Now we wanna know.
I know. I'll tell you when we're, when Jeremy goes home. Sandy?
Nothing to report.
No, not you. Ryan, do you have anything you'd like to report?
I'm just happy to be here. Nothing necessary to report.
Good. It's still.
Happy you are here.
Yeah. Okay, Tim, now it's your turn.
Well, I was gonna tell Ryan, because today he got stuck on I-5 behind a bad wreck.
Yeah.
That he really needs to start using the Colentino jet or the helicopter, so.
I bet they have one.
Tell Michael the next time.
It's a good joke. We have, he flies private.
Oh, does he? Oh, wow. It's, it's pretty fun. So I would just like to thank.
We have an airport.
I would just like to thank the staff and the council for Tuesday's meeting. I, I thought it was very productive for us to be able to sit up here and talk about important things such as revenue, capital, personnel. It was kind of, some of the stuff I know was kind of redundant for some of you, but they've been here a while, but in, in some of it I felt was fairly new, so, but it is good, I feel, to go out and, and go out to the sites and look at the wastewater plant, look at, you know, where the infrastructure is, the bones of the city. And it was also good for us to kind of come to a conclusion in, in regards to our infrastructure, especially when it came to our wastewater plant, and talking about, you know, we're pushing capacity, and the only way for us to grow is to grow our wastewater plant's capacity, and we're gonna be diligently working with Craig and Pace and bringing some stuff back, because I think that, that, that's going to determine our future, especially our economic future. Because if you don't have that infrastructure in, it's gonna be hard to bring those good-paying jobs that we, we desperately need here, so. And so I appreciate that. I've also, this last month, got the council's blessing to remove the furloughs from our public safety employees. public safety employees. We've been having a difficult time, Justin, especially with recruitment, which I understand, if you're going to try to recruit a brand-new rookie police officer or a veteran police officer on a lateral, it's very hard to say, hey, welcome aboard, you get a 10% pay cut on your first day. So that makes it tough. So although we are still planning on keeping the furloughs in place for the rest of the staff and public works, there is some supplemental coming in from EDD that's going to help offset some of that, but we project some pretty good savings still for our city here, so. And with that, I, I think that's all I had to say.
Cool, thank you. So we will adjourn to closed session.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Mine's mine.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Okay.
Do you want me to close that thing?
To closed session.
To closed session.
Okay. Moved and seconded to adjourn to closed session. All in favor?
Aye.
Good. Me too.
Aye.
Are we going that way?
Yes, definitely.
That's your favorite part?